All right, I call this meeting James City County Board of Supervise Regular Meeting Order, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three at one P. M. Mr. Stevens, would you call the roll, please, sir?
Sir, Ms. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. McGlynn.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
All right, I'll need a motion to amend the agenda to move the F Y twenty twenty-three annual report to the board discussion item number three. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Roll call, please, sir.
Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
All right, before we move into presentations, I want to ask John Carnefacts to meet me up at the podium.
Wait, we're on our back there, body.
All right, tell me a little bit about your dealings with the Henderson folks and some of the items that they did for us at the parks and...
Well, about three weeks ago, you called me, Mr. Hippel, and said, hey, do we have a project for Henderson Incorporated? Each year Henderson Incorporated, they've been around since nineteen fifty-seven, so they've been in this, I don't think anybody that's here was around in nineteen fifty-seven, but Henderson Inc. has been here since nineteen fifty-seven, and they'd had a community day over the last umpteen years of cutting firewood, and they were looking for another project. And so you called me up and connected me with Bruce, and Bruce and I got together and talked about a few projects, and Henderson showed up on December eighteenth out at Chickahominy Riverfront Park and put in four or five hours of work with about thirty-plus employees and a lot of heavy equipment and did some work that we hope will be, one day be a picnic area for our residents. It's to the right of the new pier, and it's got a great sunset, and we're going to work with some Boy Scouts to do some Eagle Scout projects to finish the project up, but they were a great help in getting this project moving forward. So just wanted to extend my appreciation for you for connecting us and for Henderson for making that effort and demonstrating their commitment to James City County and supporting this community.
And Henderson Inc. always, you know, did wood drive, and they had all their employees, or most of their employees, out there most of the day delivering wood. And when Bruce called me up and said, hey, look, where people aren't burning wood like they used to burn, and we want to do a project for James City County, do you have anything out there that we can do? And I said, well, let me check, and of course got with John and put the two of them together, and John told me about an area that we could do, where in fact we were dedicating the pier when John was showing me the area that we could look at clearing and take, and that saves a lot of money for the citizens of James City County, and we appreciate Henderson being willing enough to come forward and say, hey, what can we do for our community? They do a lot for the community that a lot of people don't know, like a lot of our businesses, they not only make a living here, but they put back in the community, which really means a lot to James City County. So it's a partnership between the two of us, and hopefully this will continue in years to come with other projects that we may have come up that they may want to take on or help us with. And I'd like to bring the team up and give a little certification on, thank you very much for all your hard work, and thank you, Bruce, for taking the time to let us know that y'all had something that you could help us with. Thank you. You know, and thank you, and tell you, Dad Pete, thank you for everything that he does well for the community and has done all these years, and what a great team y'all have, and we appreciate it very much. And if y'all get a chance to go down to the Riverfront Park and look at where they cleared the area out and limbed everything up and all that, we're going to put picnic tables out there and everything, so you'll be able to sit out there, relax, watch the sunsets, beautiful sunset. I've seen pictures, haven't gotten the chance to go out there and see all the work they've done, but I've seen pictures of all the work they've done, and it's a beautiful-looking site now. So if you get a chance, make your way out there, and if you get a chance to let the Henderson team know, or anybody in Henderson, how much we appreciate it, James City County, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you.
We really enjoyed doing it.
Y'all want to say anything? Welcome.
Well, I won't take up too much time, but we did really truly enjoy doing it. I'm glad there was a need there. Like you said, the wood cut has been around for over thirty years, and that need has been diminishing, and so we really wanted to do something where there was a need and to give back to the place that we work and live. So thank you for allowing us the opportunity to do that. It is a beautiful site. It's opened it up quite a bit, and hopefully a lot of the residents and others can enjoy it and some in this room. So thank you, and thank you, John. John was really sweet. He came out that morning on Saturday and spoke to us and our employees, and we had a great turnout.
And it was your employees and their families?
Yes.
So they got, not only their employees, but families came in and joined in as well. So great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next we'll move into presentations. Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This afternoon, I'm here to recognize Brenda Grow, Records and Imaging Administrator and the county's official records manager. Brenda started with the county in March of nineteen eighty-eight, serving thirty-five years and eight months with the county. Records at that time consisted mainly of paper documents being converted to microfilm or microfiche, basically film photography, film development of documents in specialized machines. As the county's records manager, Brenda, along with her staff, are responsible for the proper preservation, accessibility, and destruction of recorded information under the laws administered by the Library of Virginia. Brenda has served as our records retention, distribution, storage, destruction, digital imaging, electronic document management expert for thirty-five years. Some significant accomplishments during Brenda's tenure include the elimination of the microfilm/microfiche creation as the primary preservation medium, eliminating handling harsh chemicals by staff, the introduction of scanning documents into digital images in the late nineteen nineties as the primary method of preserving, storing, and accessing documents for citizens and staff, implementing a database to track the location, storage, and proper destruction of documents based on retention laws, and the implementation of county public records online for citizens and businesses to access. Two things you can always count on from Brenda are our insistence on records management staff and records management systems to work in service of the citizens to meet their information needs, and that public records in the county are preserved, stored, made available based upon federal, state, and local laws. From all of us in Information and Resources Management in James City County, we wish you well in retirement, Brenda, and thank you for your service to the citizens.
Thank you. Thank you, every one of you. It's been a privilege and an honor to work for James City County.
Brenda, would you like to do a picture with the board?
Yep.
You can destroy it later on.
Mike, would you like to come up? Neil, what else you want to bring up, too? If you want to bring anybody else, bring them up. Okay. All right, we have a proclamation, commendation for the James City County Bruton Volunteer Fire Department on its seventy-fifth anniversary. Whereas the James City County Bruton Volunteer Fire Department was founded in February nineteen forty-eight by the residents of James City County in order to provide fire protection and emergency assistance for everyone without obligation or charge, and whereas on the night of March sixteenth, nineteen forty-eight, a special meeting was called to adopt a set of bylaws to govern the new fire department. The meeting was held in the Norwich Hall and was attended by sixty-eight members of the James City Bruton Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas in nineteen sixty-four, work was started on the present fire station in Tuana, the new Tuana Fire Station was completed in nineteen sixty-eight and has been expanded twice between nineteen eighty and today. And whereas today, the James City Bruton Volunteer Fire Department is a state-of-the-art fire department that provides fire and rescue services to residents of all geographical areas of James City County, residents of Western York, and residents of Eastern New Kent County. And whereas dedicated individuals train and work long hours to defend and protect the safety and well-being of local residents, visitors, and commuters, and we commend the brave and dedicated past and present members of the James City Bruton Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas the volunteers of James City County Fire Department respond to a wide variety of emergency incidents, including fire, vehicle accidents, technical rescue, maritime emergencies, hazmat incidents, and emergency medical events, these individuals average around fifteen hundred calls for assistance annually. Now therefore be it resolved that I, the chairman of the Board of Supervise for James City County, do hereby commend the James City Bruton Volunteer Fire Department for its seventy-five years of dedicated service to the citizens of James City County and the Bruton District of York County. I urge all citizens to recognize and celebrate their dedication and service to our community. A witness thereof, I do set my hand and cause the seal of James City County, Virginia, to be affixed this twenty-eighth day of November twenty twenty-three. There you are, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mike. It means a lot coming from you, because you're a lifetime member of our organization. Mike's been around for a long time, and I understand you were president for a while.
Yes.
Of which I now hold that office, so we have a lot in common.
We do.
I do want to take this opportunity to once again thank not only Mike, but the entire board for their continued support of the James City Bruton Volunteer Fire Department, not only training-wise, but financially assisting us with our gear and our fire programs and our training, affording us the opportunity to train along with and be as proficient in our duties as the career staff here in James City County. So again, I want to thank everyone. This is wonderful. Hopefully we'll be around for another seventy-five years, and we'll see what happens. But thank you very much.
Thank you. You want to do a picture with the board? And I want to say a few more things as well. And also, being a member and knowing the department as well as I do, and a lot of times if you listen to some of these meetings, you'll hear me talk about the volunteers, and it's amazing the amount of money we save in James City County because of these volunteers. And they're getting up in the middle of the night, they're going to calls, and then going to work the next day. So, you know, they're putting, all the volunteers are putting a lot of effort and a lot of time in our department to assist with our paid staff as well, but more to assist the citizens of James City County. So hats off, and if you'll let all the volunteers know how much we, the board, appreciate all the volunteer time and effort and all the money we save through their efforts. Thank you. All right, board? bulk fuel delivery service, grant award of twenty-four thousand six hundred and forty-four, bulletproof vest partnership, grant award for twenty-five thousand competitive litter prevention and recycling grant, grant award for one thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty-three fall green grant, grant award for a hundred and sixty thousand seven eighty dollars fiscal year twenty twenty-two homeland security grant program, urban area security incentives, grant award of thirty-two thousand two hundred and forty-six for litter prevention and recycling program, allocation appropriations of housing and neighborhood development fund balance in the minutes of adoptions. Any item anyone wishes to pull, or may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion on the floor. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
All right, board discussions. Historical Triangle Recreation Facilities Authority, authority update, excuse me. That's up to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I also serve on the Historic Triangle Recreation Facility Authority as a board member. I am their vice chair. So it's my pleasure to introduce this agenda item and what I think is a very exciting project for our community. Next slide, Jason. I thought I'd start with just talking about what the HTRFA is. We are a governmental entity formed to evaluate, and if feasible and our elected bodies approve, to oversee the construction and management of recreational and tourism facilities. We have been working hard the last year. The board consists of the three chief administrative officers from York, City of Williamsburg, and James City, and our respective assistants or parks and recreation directors. And then the authority is tasked with the purchasing, releasing the property, procuring the construction and findings of the project, and managing the operations of approved facilities. And so this is our first project or facility that we are talking about today. Before I go much further, I do want to thank our board members, consultants, and design team. We have put a lot of hours, a lot of conversation, a lot of back and forth to get this in front of you today, and I do want to thank them for their participation and effort. And I want to recognize my board members that are here as well in the audience, because we all believed it's an important enough project to be here and be present, and I know their time is very valuable. First is our chair, city manager of Williamsburg, Andrew Trevette. Second is our secretary, York County Administrator Neil Morgan. Third is Robbie Hutton, representing the City of Williamsburg and their Parks and Recreation Director. And last that is here and present, John Carnefacts, our Recreation Director, representing James City County. And John even dressed up for today, so really happy to have him in that role as well. In terms of background, you know, we have talked about a facility similar to this for a number of years, as far back at least as two thousand and fourteen, where we went through a study to determine the feasibility. It did not move forward at that time. Additional funding was made available through the one percent sales tax in two thousand and eighteen, whereby the city really took the lead in some tourism grant opportunities for their community, and the Hotel Motel Association took that opportunity to submit to the city a project that we are talking about today. And so that got us from fourteen to two thousand and eighteen to nineteen, to the formation of the authority in the fall of twenty-one, to really the idea of moving forward with this unsolicited proposal that we received in twenty-two, to evaluating those proposals, talking about where we would put it. We did look at sites really throughout the city, trying to make sure it was something that benefited all three localities in terms of restaurants, hotels, and opportunities for those that would be visiting, with the idea of sports tourism being a driver for all of the financing of this facility. We have gotten to a point, and of yesterday, where the HTRFA Board did approve this project to come forward, to ask for funding, and so today we're not asking anything of you other than to provide an opportunity for you to ask questions, to hear an update of where we are, and to see what you need before we go forward. Our hope as an authority is we would be able to maybe approve the financial agreements to this at your next meeting or a December timeframe that would allow the project to move forward, we hope, rather quickly. Next slide. So sort of a current status of where we are. We did set up this new governmental entity. As I said, it is a governmental entity. All the finances, our regular public meetings, we've hired an attorney, we've had consultants on board, and we have been working diligently over the past two years. We did select a portion of the hundred and sixty-eight or Colonial Williamsburg Visitor Center site as a preferred location for this facility. We have executed a forty-year lease contingent upon this project being approved. So if boards choose to move it forward, our lease is intact. If we choose not to move forward, there is a way for us to come out of that lease. We have selected MEB and their team as our design build contractor, and so we are to the point now, they have been working under an interim agreement to get us to a point today where they have a cost that is very close to what it will cost us if we choose to move forward. And then we are evaluating facility operators. Our recommendation will be, rather than us hiring staff and run it, we would likely hire an executive director that oversees the facility, becomes our face and voice for the facility, but we would hire an operator to run the facility at least in the first five-to-ten-year timeframe. They'll have contacts, they'll be able to bring in tournaments, they have some other things in marketing and other experience with facilities across the country, and so we hope to make that selection in the January, February timeframe and have them on board as well. But we know a cost, and so that cost is included in the financials that you will see later. The recommendation from the HTRFA Board, it recommends moving forward with the sports facility. We'll talk more about that later. We do believe it is financially feasible. We do believe it'll have a positive impact in all three localities, for both localities in terms of taxes and our business community, as visitors come into the community, spend their time and money here, and that it will provide additional recreation facilities for our residents. In particular, James City needs the gym space, and I hope to say that at the end. If I keep with my notes, we need the space, whether we do it this way or we do gyms on our own. I believe this provides a low-cost alternative to our residents during the week and some value to our businesses during the weekends. Next slide. The remaining steps, and again, later in the month, as I'd alluded to, and we'd be back to you in the December timeframe. Today, we are providing overview to you. You're the first locality we've been to, so we get to be the test case for that. We'll see how it goes today. We'll also be in York County in front of their Board of Supervisors and with the City of Williamsburg in front of their city council in the coming weeks. And then approval by all three localities, hopefully by the end of December. That would be our hope and request of you. And then again, we would then execute a comprehensive development agreement with MEB that would give us that guaranteed maximum price to have the project going forward. So with that, I would like to introduce Rick Hibbit with MEB. He has been their, I guess is their business development manager. He has been our point of contact along with twenty other people or more on his side of the team, and I'll let Rick take us through the project.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be part of this presentation today and give you an update on where we're at from a design standpoint on the sports Like to thank you for the opportunity to be part of this presentation today and give you an update on where we're at from a design standpoint on the sports center. We've got a big group with us kind of representing each of the team members. I'm a resident of the county, so I'm honored to stand in front of you today and be a part of this process and excited to demonstrate the work that's been, that's taken place. I do want to thank the members of the authority as well as the design committee that was set up. Their guidance and leadership has been instrumental in helping us get to where we're at. It's been a great process. It's been a smooth process and one that everyone can take a lot of pride in. We're giving you a little sneak peek here of the venue at a thirty five percent design development process. We're going to get into it a little bit more here in just a second, but we wanted to give you a slight sneak peek. Could you go back one slide? I hit it too early. Just to recap who our team members are, MEB is the lead design builder. Clark Nixon is the lead architect and lead engineer. And Guernsey Tingle is a consulting architect as part of the design team. Timmons Group is leading civil design. Henderson is our site and civil contractor. They've been a part of the design and preconstruction phase and been an instrumental part of that. And then Victus Advisors is a consulting firm out of Park City, Utah, that have helped with operations and programming. They've worked directly for the city and they've also worked for the authority. And we use them to make sure that as we make design changes, they can check it from an operational standpoint that it's still going to meet the requirements and the needs that they, that the facility needs to. Interim agreement started in earnest with a notice to proceed in March of this year. The design committee that included two members of the authority and two members of Colonial Williamsburg was established and we had our kickoff meeting in May. And design really progressed through summer into August. And then after our twenty percent design deliverable was approved, we moved forward to today. And we'll be turning in our last package in two days from now. That will include a couple hundred pages worth of design documents and specifications and a lot more detail on the project and of course the cost and the schedule. So the original scope, when we submitted a proposal, included roughly a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Twelve basketball courts that were convertible into twenty four volleyball courts and could also house thirty six pickleball courts. It was ceiling mounted athletic equipment, so state of the art technology. So all your basketball goals, your volleyball systems, your scoreboards, your curtain dividers are all hung from the ceiling and can be operated with a touch of a button from an iPad or a central location, which obviously allows flexibility and turnover. And you can also do simultaneous events at the same time. So everything in this venue is state of the art. And we made sure the technology made it so that operational costs were lowered and the flexibility will allow a wide variety of activities. It also includes forty eight tip and roll bleachers. So those bleachers could be rolled around and reconfigured as necessary depending on the event and the activity. It's got a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet of maple flooring. So that's just under three acres of wood floor. It's a lot of wood flooring. But it's, and it's all clear span. It's all unencumbered from any kind of structural elements in the, in the middle of the facility. Again, allowing flexibility of usage. The original scope included referee changing rooms, meeting spaces, food and beverage areas, storage areas, office and administration areas, first aid and training. Really everything you would need to make this facility successful and support the activities that would take place during the week for the community as well as weekend events. During the interim agreement, our team was tasked with looking at some additional scope items, which included roughly about forty thousand square feet of additional programming. A conversion turf system, which again, state of the art, not many of those in the country. A climbing rock wall ninja gym area that could be used during tournaments and events for spectators and siblings of participants as well as during the week for community members. And really enhancing the architectural appearance of the building to match the greater Williamsburg region and the feel for architecture. And you'll see, I think, I think we, our team, including the authority and their supervision have hit the mark with that. Looking at the site real fast, and so this is the visitor center site. If you notice in the bottom left hand corner, that is the group arrivals building at the visitor center. What we tried to do was maintain as much of the existing infrastructure as we could with parking and roadways and entrances. We wanted to try to minimize the impact on the site and reuse as much as we could, try to be sustainable with the site as much as possible. The location is between Visitor Center Drive, that's south of the building, that's planned south of the building and bypass road. And we tried to utilize the foliage of the tree buffer there to be able to put the building where it's not seen from bypass. But when you come up to the front of the building, it's visible from the parking lot. Zooming in a little bit to the entry plaza. It's a very nice plaza. It's going to be a place where people want to gather. And it's, the entrance is going to be clearly defined, clearly marked. The drop off areas, entrance in there will navigate people straight into this, this area. And there'll be seating walls and places for people to eat lunch and take a break from maybe the activities that are going inside and all the whistles and noise that's taking place. Quick look at the overall site and maybe what the future could be. That was one of the other tasks we had was to make sure that this was, the sports center was planned with the future in mind. And so we placed the sports center in a location that will allow for future expansion of sports or event facilities, whether it be ice hockey or aquatics. Or a performance venue, as you see kind of in the middle of the screen, as well as future development throughout the other areas of the site. And we tried to make everything planned south, entertainment and sports related. And everything north of the plan would allow for future commercial development as the site progressed. So we're going to take a little trip around the building here, starting with the entry. You'll notice that the front entrance is big, large, clear, kind of open spaces. And we really wanted that to be the focus of the building. And compared to other venues, I personally have been to about fifteen or twenty other sports centers across the country from California to New York. And this is going to, this is going to be one of the best looking facilities in the country, if not the best. There's no other facility that's going to have this kind of architectural features that this one does. Zooming in a little bit, you can start to see some of the inside of the building. You can see the art, the rock wall in the background, that climbing area, which will be a major amenity to the space, really enhance the experience that participants have while they're there. You can see the box office. Again, it's just very clearly defined. This is the entrance. When you're here, this is your first impression of the building. And it sets the stage for the rest of your time there. We're going to kind of go around the west end of the building, northwest end of the building. A mix of brick and wood and metal and glass to really play on a modern feel of Williamsburg while alluding to or nodding to some of those historic features that make Williamsburg so prominent. Very far into the building, and this is a very unique component. And this, no other facility in the country has this. This is what we're calling the patio and the balcony of the facility on the very far end, northwest end of the building. This is going to be an incredible place to view activities in the lawn area, in a future performance venue. It's going to be a great spot for parents to take a break from the activities inside. It'll be a great place to have meetings and hospitality. It can really be a VIP area and space and a great place to just gather and have community activities as well. This is the north end of the building as we kind of go around. And this is pretty much, a lot of this is blocked by the trees as we get to the north and east side of the building. And then back of the house, which is obviously important in these venues, this will be the load in, load out space. And we've got the access road that travels all the way around the facility. Quick little fly through of the facility, just to give you a full picture of it. The long building, it's seven hundred and fifty feet or so long. But what we've tried to do is architecturally break that up so it doesn't feel that long. You'll see in some later slides, you can actually fit three Boeing seven, seven, sevens in the facility. So it is a major, major venue. There we go. All right. So inside the building now, looking at an overall floor plan. Clearly what sticks out the most are the twelve basketball courts. Again, that's about a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet of open floor space area. And to the right is the entryway. We're going to zoom in, enlarge a couple of these areas so you can get a better feel for the spaces in there. The heart of this facility will be the courts. Everything around it supports the activities that go on there. And as we go a little deeper dive into it, here's the main lobby area, the entrance into the building. The purple areas are your featured gyms where you'll have the ninja clip and climb areas. Every venue that we've been to that have these, they're well used, the kids love them, adults love them. I participated in them. They're a lot of fun. It's hard to pull the kids away from them once they get started, but it's a great amenity to have. Again, not only for the weekend events, but the community is going to be able to use this as well. We have some multipurpose event space in the back, very flexible. Everything you see about this venue, we've tried to make flexible. So those, that space could be divided into two rooms. It could be one big room. Or you could open it up to the gathering area and make that central kind of food, beverage, dining space even bigger. The kitchen servery is on the left hand side of the screen with storage, restrooms planned north. And administrative office space planned south in the front of the building along with security and ticket booths to support operations. It's a quick look of the inside lobby space. You can see the reception on the left. The glass on the right would be those, those feature gyms. And going towards the back, you see the dining and gathering spaces. Now we come west, northwest across the building. Get a little closer look at that corridor, the circulation space, big wide corridors, make sure pedestrian traffic can flow. We've got a lot of flex space rooms that can be used for a wide variety of activities. Birthday parties, corporate events, community meetings. We really wanted these large rooms. They're twenty by twenty eight. So there's a lot of different activities that could take place in there. Event office space, the ref locker rooms, which are very important for these types of facilities. They kind of need their own space. They need their own areas to get away from the activities and sometimes maybe even some crazy parents. Moving up to the mezzanine area, so the second floor of the facility is basically, so what you're seeing here is open to the, to below. So the main part of the facility is right here on the, on the mezzanine level. And as we zoom in here, we will see on the right hand side, some additional flex spaces. These come in very handy. It's a revenue generating opportunity for the facility to rent that space out. We've got some conference rooms on the, on the right hand side that overlook the entryway. Again, another opportunity to sell that. And then restrooms in the, in the middle of the venue. You about can't build enough restrooms for these things. It's, it's a hot commodity, obviously with the amount of people that come through them. On the left hand side is the balcony and the underneath it, of course, the patio. We have a large conference room that overlooks the court space, which will be a great spot to host future event promoters, tournament directors. It'll be that VIP suite area where you could really sell the venue to the users. It can be a great spot also for recruiting, coaching and recruiting, that they can kind of have that as their hospitality space. So quickly, I just want to run through kind of how this venue can be broken up into different layouts. So here you see the standard twelve basketball courts, twenty four volleyball courts. And it can quickly be transitioned into thirty six pickleball courts. So Williamsburg could host some of the largest pickleball tournaments and events in the country. I think that would be spectacular, given the popularity of the sport here in our community. And the picture you see on the right is a sports facility in Hoover, Alabama. It's called the Finley Center and they're hosting, they hosted the national pickleball championships there last year. So it's a great opportunity to capitalize on that. Wrestling, obviously Virginia wrestling is huge and getting to host wrestling. That facility right there is another sports center that's hosting a wrestling tournament. So they're ideal for that. We introduced the turf here into this image. So the conversion turf system is a rollout turf system that can be rolled out over the court space and rolled back. It's not a permanent system that's on, that's on the floor. It's a flexible system that allows you to be able to break the facility in half, half turf, half basketball volleyball, which would be great for weekday usage. If it's a time where there's not enough leagues and programming to fill up the basketball side, you could incorporate some flag football, little kicker soccer on the turf side. Again, flexibility is what we were striving for here. You could roll it out over the entire space and have three soccer fields and start to maybe do some small regional type tournaments and events. It's big enough to host an entire football field. That's how big this facility is. And again, here you can see the graphic with the airplanes. It's huge. It's a massive space. All right, I want to touch a little bit on some of the economic impacts and financial projections. HVS provided these as part of their work in two thousand and twenty one to the city of Williamsburg. And these are their numbers, but I thought it was pertinent that we show this. So they, they're projecting two hundred and forty five annual jobs. One point three million dollars in taxes. Forty two thousand room nights. That's in addition to what's already here. Five hundred and sixty thousand annual visitors and twenty one million dollars of economic output annually. So very, very strong impact numbers. We have also provided, and we have representation from Victus who have done these projections for operating pro formas. They did a study in two thousand and twenty one based upon the current scope at that time. And they have updated that to reflect the new design at two hundred thousand square feet and additional scope items that are being proposed. And again, if you have additional questions, we're prepared to answer that at the end of the presentation. So now, one of the biggest reasons we're here is to talk budget. Originally, our proposal came in at fifty three million, one hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. That included the hundred and sixty thousand square foot facility and the twelve basketball courts and all the support spaces that were required to support that. During the interim agreement, we added the scope changes as part of our design, which was forty thousand square feet, the conversion turf system, the feature gym areas and enhancing the architecture of the exterior. And so that now totals seventy nine million, nine hundred and eighty one thousand dollars as the contract budget. And a look at the schedule. So that's another part of our comprehensive agreement is providing a schedule. Right now, we are anticipating substantial completion in Q one of two thousand and twenty six. Some of that will be dependent upon city reviews and planning, like the ARB. We actually have our second conceptual review tonight at the ARB. So we're still waiting to finalize some of those approval processes and timelines. But right now, we're anticipating substantial completion in Q one, two thousand and twenty six. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Stevens.
Chairman of the board, again, just the final two or three slides in terms of cost. Again, our cost for the construction of the facility have gone up for a variety of reasons. A big part of that is because we added in additional space and inflationary factors that were occurring. I will say the city of Williamsburg initial commitment was somewhat less than the two point five million dollars shown here. So they have stepped up to cover the capital. That was really the proposal to you several years ago is the city would build it along with the maintenance of effort funds that we are all currently paying. And the counties would cover the operating subsidy. So that commitment of where we started two years ago really is where we are still today. When you look at the operating subsidy commitment, we talked about the number from us, half a million or so a year from each county a couple of years ago. We are still talking about that long term in the three to eight hundred thousand dollars per year. The initial years and what we would propose in our agreement we would bring to you is four hundred thousand in next fiscal year. So beginning in fiscal year twenty five, we would, we, James City and York would both fund four hundred thousand per year. That would start providing some upfront cash to the authority. Some ability to buy some of the tables and chairs that are not included in MEB's part of the project in the years. In the years two through five, we would be expected, and it could be reduced by the authority board. But the expectation going in is that we would each pay eight hundred thousand a year. That would help fill up some of our capital reserves for things in the future. So ten years out, when something needs to be replaced, we have money set aside for that, as well as covering the deficits, if there are deficits. And the year, first few years will be the ones where it's not stabilized in terms of having the, the tournament play. Once we have those tournaments that are recurring and coming back, I believe it will find or follow what Victus has provided in their models. And so this first year through one and the years two through five are somewhat set that way. Years five through thirty, I, I expect those numbers will be somewhat between that range of three hundred and eight hundred. And the authority board will make a recommendation to the localities for the funding requests, and the localities would divide that. Throughout this opportunity, I think I've shared with you, we have a need for gym space today. We need that for our residents, for the ongoing programs. We are still working through with the operators. We, we haven't gotten into a contract with one because we have not selected, but we've had the conversations of, we don't want to just give the facility to you and it be yours. We want the facility where you really manage it and run it for the tourism side, where you're bringing in people, maybe Friday through Sunday or Monday. We get it for our community use, little leagues, other things that we want to run Monday through Thursday or Friday. And so that's been a big issue for our side of the equation. And my thought of process is, we were going to spend money to build a facility and have gymnasiums, or we were going to participate in this and wouldn't have to spend that money. York County, I think, benefits as much from the tourism, maybe a little more than us. We've had those kind of conversations proximity to hotels, at least for the first ten years. I think their hotels are better than ours. I hope in a few years, our hotels will circle around and catch up. But in the early days, I believe that they will do better there. Long-term, I think our local usage will be higher. And Mr. Morgan and I have been discussing that the future years, once it is open, that we would have an agreement between us where the ninety percent of whatever this ask is would be split equally. The ten percent number, we would divide based on resident usage Monday through Friday. And we're working on a funding agreement to bring that to you to consider as well. But again, I think we feel that what we talked to you, or at least I feel, what I shared with you a few years ago in terms of our commitment to this facility is still very much the same. The city has really stepped up on the capital cost side for the increase of costs there. So, next slide. And then really back to where we started. Again, we're going to provide this overview. There'll be an opportunity, next slide is for you to ask any questions you may have. We are coming back to each locality with the hopes that it would be approved in December. Doesn't have to be, but the schedule's pretty tight, as Rick had pointed out. And the sooner we can be committed to it, the quicker it can move forward. It would also then require the authority to have an agreement with MEB to have that price guaranteed going forward. So, next slide. With that, if there are any comments or questions or things we didn't cover that you'd want to know about the facility, how we got here, costs or other things that you were concerned with? Questions?
I've got a couple. I'll go ahead and ask. First is about something that I think is very important. You know, as I've heard from constituents on this, on this particular matter, they do raise the question of, is, you know, what is it that we really are getting out of this? And does it really make sense to do it? Do we have a sense of, if we were building our own facility, I assume it wouldn't be the size, for, for one thing. But it would include both capital and operating expenses. Do we have a sense of what the comparison would be in terms of the investment that we've been making here versus if we were to build a, a facility to meet the needs for courts?
And Mr. McGlynn, the answer is, we have some idea. I'm going to give a shot, and then John Cornifex can correct me or add to. We have talked about adding a two gym space out in our future CIP. It's not in our current five-year CIP, but in the next five or ten years, if this facility doesn't go forward, you will see a gymnasium space show up in one of our parks. And again, so the component would be, it would address the local needs of our, of our citizens and our residents. The capital cost, John, of that gym, we had talked in multi-million dollars, so you'd have that debt service associated with that or an outlay. And then we'd have the operating cost for just our staff to open it and have it available of some number per year that I believe far exceeds our commitment of this three to eight hundred thousand per year, with no ability to have a return on investment. I do believe this facility, we will get our money back. It may be indirectly through meals tax and sales taxes and some of those other things that people that are coming to the community bring with them. But if we build a standalone, which if this doesn't go forward, would be our recommendation to you, it will cost us more to do that versus participating in this. John, anything to add that I left off?
The only thing I can add is back in two thousand and seven and eight, if you remember, we had a three gymnasium complex scheduled. We'd actually completed the design process, and we were ready to bid, bid it out when the recession hit. So we pulled, the board pulled it at that time for good reasons. And the operating cost just for a three gymnasium complex at that time now, it was two thousand and eight, was over two hundred thousand dollars a year for us to operate that. The capital cost back then was right around, to build that was around four million, which speculated would be twice that now. But that, that's a number that we used back in two thousand and eight.
Great, thanks, John. And, you know, again, I think part of the skepticism that I was hearing from some citizens was because right around the time that there was some acceleration in the discussion of the project, we had reports coming out of Virginia Beach about the significant deficits that were being run by, out of their sports center. Could, can you give us any sense of what would be different about this facility versus what they were experiencing in the Virginia Beach case?
You know, our Victus advisor, I might ask Walter Franco to come forward and be able to talk some about the Virginia Beach scenario. I will tell you, we believe that facility, and Victus has been very involved in their facility as well. I believe, and I think what is out there, their management company and the way it was being managed was problematic. It wasn't that the facility wasn't being successful in generating dollars. And, Ms. Franco, you can either correct that or add to that, as you see fit.
Of course, and thank you to Commissioner, or excuse me, another community, the Chair of the Board and the Board of Supervisors for the opportunity to be here with you today. So just for a quick context and history, so we were actually hired by Virginia Beach several years ago to conduct the feasibility study that led to the building of the Virginia Beach Sports Center. And part of that, they hired us again to help them evaluate potential operators for the facility. There were three companies that made bids. In our initial projections for the facility, we had projected an operating loss for the operations of the facility. And as is the case with really the majority of sports tourism complexes, they often operate at a cost recovery and require some form of subsidy. And so in our projections, we let the city know about that. Three of the, the bidders came forward, operators with, with how they would operate the facility. Two of the operators gave similar projections that were very similar to our projections for the loss. Then the, then the operator, which was ESM in this case, they projected that the facility would operate at a positive margin, which immediately raised a red flag for us. And we let city council know, us and city staff said, hey, this is not realistic. These facilities historically in our work and our research do not make money. City council decided to, were kind of enamored by those projections, and so they went with that operator, despite our, our advice to not go that route. And as a result, we kind of got to where we got to. I think what's key to, to note here, and I have some notes here, and I think we had a slide, I don't know if, if we have that here or not. So you can kind of visualize what, just some of the points that we wanted to share here.
Should have been the bottom.
Should be the, yeah, the very, very last one. So you, you can see, kind of here's some of the history. So that, that was back in, in twenty twenty-one, but essentially, it's, the actual operation of the facility wasn't the challenge or the issue for the city. It was more the operating agreement. As you can see here, that the operating agreement was more than six hundred thousand dollars, which is very above market of what operating agreements are for third-party operators, which included incentives paid to ESM for certain activity and events being brought to the community. They also included annual depreciation, depreciation expense, which was FFNE. The operators purchased that. The difference here with Williamsburg is that Williamsburg or the municipalities here would own the FFNE, so it would not be on the books on the operator's side, which would show as a loss. And so, again, to kind of go with the history of this, this situation, Virginia Beach ended up hiring us again to help them get out of this agreement, realizing, hey, okay, we admit, we made a mistake. We want to hire you guys again, help us get out of this agreement and understand what the true losses are and how we can select a new operator in the future. So this cost ended up being about a six, about a little bit over six million dollars. And but the majority of that is, is four point six, as you can see here, to purchase the FFNE from the operator, which wouldn't be the case with, here in, locally in James City County, York County, and Williamsburg. And then in unpaid bills to the Virginia Beach Sports Center that ESM had stopped paying vendors. One of the things there too is that the differences here is with this proposed facility that they will have market rate management fees, which can be anywhere between one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, based on the RFP responses that the Historic Triangle Association had received. And so, you know, I think this is a good learning lesson for a lot of communities and, and understanding what operators propose to communities and what's realistic and what's not. And that's why, you know, we've been working hard with MEB and also with the constituents here so that they understand what the market can bear, what the realistic, we're not here to paint a rosy picture that it's going to, you know, make millions of dollars, but it usually will operate at a, at a subsidy. But the key point is, the community wants this as a way to benefit, you know, quality of life, but also drive economic impact. And that's been a success for the Virginia Beach Sports Center. Our initial projections were somewhere in the high thirty thousand incremental room nights. In twenty twenty-two, they eclipsed that by more than fifty thousand hotel room nights. And this year, they're on pace to generate over sixty thousand hotel room nights from the, the Virginia Beach Sports Center activity for this year alone. And so from that sense, it has been a success. The challenge, as I repeat, has been with the challenge with the operating agreement, not necessarily the operations of the facility.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. I think, I think it is important to understand the context
Sure, sure.
of the experience in Virginia Beach. And, and so, maybe John can, can help with this. So what, to what degree is the demand for court space primarily weeknight demand as opposed to, to weekend for the community?
Yeah, I think, you know, the community use is, is high, and it's exceeding our gymnasium capability now in the schools and, and with the, the two rec centers. So everything's growing, population's growing, participation in all sports, and the growth of, if you've heard of pickleball. So I, I think the gyms will be very well-used from Monday through Thursday with local residents from, from all three communities.
Thanks, John. And, and so now that we've moved on to pickleball, I just wanted to know the comparison between what was the thirty-six pickleball courts that would be permitted here versus that Alabama facility? Are, is this something that would actually exceed the Alabama facility, or is it a comparable size or?
Generally speaking, yes, it would exceed it. So that facility is, is eleven courts. They've actually got tighter court spacing too. So that, I, I failed to note this. This facility has ample court spacing, which is critical to attracting tournaments and, and opportunities because they want that free space, that safe play area. So this venue would be able to, to host more than what they could. So when you compare when, you know, three years from now, when the National Pickleball Association's looking to do their tournament, I think Williamsburg is going to be up there as a top contender, you know, for that event. So yes, they would be able to host a lot more.
And I didn't notice any space for orthopedic services, but
Yeah. Well, that has been discussed, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
So just a couple comments. One, thank you very much for this presentation. Thank the authority for all the work. As someone who has been very closely aligned with tourism, especially with, in our Tourism Council, I know that something like this is, is much needed here. And I just would make a, just an observation too about Virginia Beach in that it is not a year-round destination. It is a very popular destination in the summer. I, absolutely. We have become a year-round destination, especially with the efforts that Busch Gardens has made lately to stay open almost twelve months a year. Plus, we have Colonial Williamsburg, we have Jamestown, Yorktown. People, when, when you're doing a tournament here in January, there is things that families can go do, which I think is huge. And I think must be pointed out as a difference in Virginia Beach. It's very difficult to go to the beach on a day like tomorrow. But hey, good for those that do do it. And today, yes. I would also remind that, you know, we are supposed to be using tourism money to reinvest in tourism. And so I know that we have chosen to use our money, that we get our half of the percent in capital projects. But, you know, that might be something that would, that we want to look at as well. So I would be curious in December to, if we could get the amount of money that we have gotten from the Historic Triangle Tax and how, you know, I know that we, we use our tourism money in a variety of ways. But to me, that is what, that, that is money that we're, our lodging tax, tourism funds that are supposed to be reinvested in tourism. I think that's very important. I, you know, I know that you know this, but I believe you need to get somebody on board as soon as possible. As we learned at VACO this year and in years past, people are already signing up for things years from now, tournaments. And so I think that's going to be very important, should this be approved, which I hope it will be. And, and we also need to, to be working on a slogan. That's very important as well. So I, I think my, my main question, it would be about the financial impact of the Historic Triangle Tax, what that's been for, for the December. And if I think of anything else, then I will send the email. So, thank you.
I would just like to add that having been at VACO and sat in on the conference talking about rural tourism and, and some of the other localities further west from us that are doing these facilities. And having seen this presentation, it's a beautiful building. It far surpasses anything I saw at the VACO conference. It's, it's beautiful. And to Ms. Larson's point, we're supposed to be reinvesting this tourism money into tourism, which I think this would accomplish. And I think the difference in building local gyms and rec centers, which our citizens obviously need, they don't necessarily impact the local economy like bringing in people from all around the world in the country would. So many of our businesses will benefit from something like this because of everyone coming in twelve months out of the year. They're going to come in to Busch Gardens, to Ms. Larson's point, and then participate in some of these activities. I would like to offer that maybe we need headphones for pickleball tournaments of that size, because it's going to be a little loud. But anyway, I, I just commend you for this presentation. You've done a wonderful job and beautiful, beautiful facility. And I think from everything I did here at that presentation at VACO, I think this, and having a great little catchy slogan, is going to put us a step above what other people might have to offer. So kudos to you all, and thank you for a great job.
Jim? For Mr. Stevens, when, when you bring it back to us, in order to make a, a decision that's in the best interest of our taxpayers, and I know this is a regional project, but each of the three partners in the regional project has an obligation to their own taxpaying citizens to ensure that the cost benefit for their jurisdiction makes sense. And one of the things that I find very difficult to do is, and is to take a look at the projected regional tax generation, about, about one point three, one point four million dollars a year. But that's for the region. And when you take a look at the facility and the surrounding hotels and restaurants and everything, the bulk of them are in York County and in, and, and the, the city, not so much in James City County. And so my question is, in order to be able to make that, an analysis of this, I need to have a better feel for how much of that one point four million would be generated by James City County facilities. In other words, how much, how much actual tax of that one point four million actual tax benefit would come back to James City County? I, I think that's, that's, that's a critical piece that, you know, it's, it's lumped together there. It makes, it's very, looks very reasonable on, 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 on the overall. But when, when I'm looking at it from the point of view of, of us locally, I think that's a critical part we, we have to take a look at. Also for comparison, I remember when we did, we actually had two studies before you were on the board, Michael. One was for a swim facility and one was for a community gymnasium. I believe that's what was being referenced there. Neither one, of course, which, you know, made money, but the, the question was, what, what was it? What were the costs and what were the benefits? And it was clear that the community gymnasium was much closer to providing benefit for our citizens as opposed our citizens as opposed to the swim facility. That the question I had was, if we were looking at trying to satisfy the clear need to be able to make a valid comparison between what this project offers to our citizens and what a community gym offers to our citizens, I need to be able to see those figures again. So that information, I think, needs to come back to us as part of the deliberations we would have in December when we were taking a look at it. And in summary, I would, I would remind people that we got to where we are right now and we're calling it tourism money. But it's, before it was tourism money, it was tax money, tax money that comes from our citizens. And I had this discussion with Scott earlier. The way this is set up is probably one of the most regressive taxes that we have in the Commonwealth. It adversely affects everybody at the low end of the spectrum by putting that additional 1% on them. I've always been a believer that we ought to have tourism money. We ought to have tourism and it ought to come from like we did before. It ought to come from the tourism business and the tourism we generate. There is a risk that that potential money may not be there in the future. That was one of the reasons we made the decision to put any money we got into one-time capital projects and not bake it into an ongoing operating budget. Because what happens when it goes away? And it can go away.
I was talking also about the lodging tax.
Oh, I understand. No, I, the lodging tax and the room tax, that's all. I understand that clearly. I'm talking about the 1%, the 1%. And that's, that's what, I think there's a very, very high risk there that I think we have to be very cautious about. And so, you know, when we sit down to take a look at this, I really want to make sure we make a good decision that's in the interests of our citizens. And we need that additional information, I think, to be able to make a valid decision. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am, you have one?
You know, I do, I was on the board when we did that one study and I do remember that and the swim was definitely underwater.
No pun intended.
No, none at all. And none of these facilities on their own break even. And it's just like Parks and Recs. I mean, Parks and Recs were 4, 54% that we bring in and the rest we subsidize on what we get from Parks and Recs of John. I think 54% was the right, right number. And so, you know, if you look at that, this could be another idea of just the same as Parks and Recs, you know, as far as we want to offer Parks and Recs for our citizens and they want to be in the parks, they want to be able to walk their dogs, they want to be able to do this, or the others want to be able to play volleyball and football and basketball and racquetball or anything else that they want to do. So, you know, there will be, but the only thing difference in this facility that I'm seeing in Parks and Recs is Parks and Recs has no way of gathering as much as this facility will do as far as heads and beds and eating out and restaurants. And that's why I ain't going to Busch Gardens, Water Country and.
Prime outlets.
Yeah, prime outlets and, you know, to take, take advantage of all that. So, you know, that'll be the other side that'll benefit, will have a benefit from this. So that's just my two cents. And so what do you need from us today? Anything else?
The chairman members of the board, I think any other questions you have in the coming weeks, I'll start sharing some information about the operating agreement. We had a pretty good draft of it, so as that gets finalized this week, I would share that with you, just so if you have questions on that. But we just encourage you to ask questions. So as we get to your December meeting, we hope to be able to answer all of those.
At our December meeting, hopefully we'll make a decision in the December meeting, but we'll see as we get more information.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make one point about, about the sales tax, the Historic Triangle sales tax. And that is that we were able to convince Senator Norman to change that so that groceries were excluded and the $3 head tax was reinstated as, as part of it so that everybody who was going to benefit would have some skin in the game directly and that we would try to address some of that regressivity of sales tax.
Could you be, and visit Williamsburg should be able to help with this, get the, what is the sports tourism impact on the economy for Virginia? In which we may, I think we heard some from what Chesterfield and Henrico are. And just so not to pick on the James City hoteliers too bad, the hotels that are closest to the facility would definitely be York, but I know we should, we will see spillover for those teams, especially in the ones closest to Busch Gardens. And then I would just have to, as a former swim parent, I do have to speak up for swim and say that, well, I mean, I don't know that we've served our citizens well, frankly, by not having another pool. We have swim teams that are practicing outside in neighborhood facilities, which we have had to deal with on another avenue because we do not have swim facilities here to, you know, with all due respect to our rec center, you can't dive in it. So our high school teams, it's not truly a place that they can practice. So we have not necessarily served our swim community well, which by the way, is a huge community. So, I mean, it may be a money loser, but sometimes you have to say what serves your citizens, too. So.
Good point. Thank you. All right, any others?
All right. Good. Okay, we'll move right along. James City County Marina improvements. Alistair, welcome. Long time no see.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here today to give you all kind of an update on where we are with the marina, what we've, what our current progress so far to date, what we've accomplished, what we have left to do, some of the challenges associated with that and what our plan is moving forward. And then a little bit about the budget and timeline. So just kind of a quick update here. So just to refresh you, we were here about a year ago when we had the covered boat slips. They were in poor, poor condition, so we did have to demolish those. We completed that work early in 2023. We've also completed a lot of smaller kind of operational projects during that time, repairs to the existing boat ramp, structural repairs to the building and some interior and exterior painting. Really think we've improved the appearance of the marina as it stands right now. We were able to finish up with the first phase of improvements at the end of the summer. We got our fuel marine pump out installed and operational. We've been working with our folks in stormwater and a contractor to come up with a stormwater master plan for the entire site. As you'll see as we get into this, there's so many elements on this site that can contribute to the stormwater. We had to kind of put them all together and get that master plan before we moved forward with some of the next steps. And we've, we have under contract, the installation of docks F and T is shown on this map here. So if you remember, these are 16 additional boat slips in front of the, the existing uncovered slips here. And then this long transient walkway for day users, people using Billsburg, people coming in and out of the marina there. So those are under contract, will be under construction this winter and will be open by this April. In addition, we've been working on a conceptual design for a bath house to replace the existing one there that'll be accessible, be a little closer to the boating amenities, meet some of the requirements from the Department of Health for the number of slips and the number of restrooms and shower facilities we have. So with all that, we still have a lot of remaining improvements to finish, really what is two projects. The remainder of Phase Two of the marina, which includes additional 65 to 70 boat slips that would replace the old two covered slips there. We have the bath house that I mentioned that would be in this area here. We have the new boat ramp that would move the boat ramp out to the end of the basin, kind of relieve some of the congestion from the existing boat ramp here. It'd be wider and it'd be able to accommodate the boat traffic that we get out there. And it also includes part of another project, which was the parking, one of the, one of the biggest challenges out there, the parking and stormwater infrastructure to support all of these operations as well as Billsburg and the proposed restaurant on the site. And then in addition to that, we've been looking at utilizing the leased property from the Jamestown, Yorktown Foundation for dry boat storage. If you remember, we do have that shown on the Jamestown Beach Event Park Master Plan, but we did see an opportunity to include that here on this site. So that's quite a bit. It's, it's quite a bit in that one area. This is, just shows kind of a concept of that dry storage on the leased parcel there. So some of the challenges we have right now, we've been moving forward with, with a few of these initial parts of the plan and smaller projects, but a lot of this is funded through ARPA. There are some deadlines and timelines that we have to adhere to with that, one of which is we do have to have those funds encumbered by December of 2024. Another challenge that we're up against is the coordination. We want to be able to keep Billsburg open, keep the marina open, and that, there are a lot of elements that need to be coordinated in order to complete all those projects. We also, with the proposed restaurant, there will be a requirement of a special use permit on this parcel, which will also include a traffic study. We, we will need to renew and we're working on renewing some of our permits, Army Corps joint permits for, for doing some of that work in the water area. I mentioned the stormwater management, just making sure we have all that tied together and in the budget. So moving forward, our plan, in order to kind of help with some of those challenges is to pursue, pursue a design build to complete all of these remaining projects together. So we would have one design build team to help. We have some design already completed, but there's some parts that are new that will need designed to tie all that together and have one general contractor that can really, really help coordinate all these kind of complex tasks and manage to keep all this open at the same time. And as a part of that, we, we would want that team to have several public meetings so that we can make sure we're getting public input on some of these design decisions as we move forward from some of our marina users, either whether they're boaters or other community members that use this area. Budget, if, if you recall, part of this project, the, the parking and stormwater for the restaurant was funded through ARPA, but the rest wasn't funded. We were actually able to move funds from another ARPA project to get us started, but our internal estimates project that we're probably still about two and a half to $3 million short to complete all the projects that I mentioned before. We'll have a better idea of that as we move forward with this process. We're, we're beginning that process now, but we're, we're looking to receive requests for proposals for the design build team in early spring of 2024. And at that time, we should have a much better idea of where our, our projected costs are. With all that together, we're targeting a completion of all these projects in the spring of 2026. And I should note that we're in an early enough stage, there's, there's several factors that can affect that timeline, but we're pretty confident of that 2026 year for this. So that's kind of a quick, general, broad overview. I have Barry Moses, our Capital Projects Coordinator here, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would like to say we are talking about going out and meeting with our boating community to just sort of update them as well. My recommendation has been we build the docks, we not make them covered. And so if you have a strong opinion of that, if you'd let us know in the weeks to come as we start having those meetings, because I'm sure there are some in the boating community who would like that, to have a covered slip, it is nice, but it's a pretty significant cost addition for not a whole lot of more markup in our rent. And I think now that we've taken the roofs down, I knew the structures that were floating were in pretty bad shape. And so when we remove that, we did it for safety reasons, but I think we've gotten, well, for me, we've gotten more compliments about how nice it looks, being able to see out of Powhatan Creek, that I think if you put the roof back up, you'd have a pretty significant outcry from people who think you're taking away that view shed that we've opened up. And that was really not intended by me. I was doing it for safety, but it really has opened up the creek so that it's really pleasing to look out there. So.
Does that affect that two and a half to $3 million that he was talking about? Does that impact that at all?
So that number was, was not considering those docks covered, so it would be in addition to that. But we did want to build in some public input to get some of those design decisions, get input from the public on those.
So I guess I always get a little leery when you ask for public input, but then if you don't do what they say, because if they, if the majority of your boaters come out and say, yes, I want covered, and we say, well, we like it better if it doesn't look covered, we got a problem.
Sure.
Because then we didn't listen. So just be, just think of that moving forward, because.
Is there a sense in which we can't charge a rate that would produce the same level of revenue?
Mr. McGinn, I think we could. We do market studies to see where the rates fall. And again, before, the covered and uncovered were a similar rate for us because the covered were in such bad shape. Even that said, when you tried or we tried to raise rates on the covered slips, we had a pretty big pushback to, you shouldn't raise it that much because it wouldn't, in my opinion, would need to be substantially higher. If we're charging, so 200 a month or thereabouts for a boat slip, your covered slip is going to be more than that. It's an annual contract. It's not a, you do it for two months and you're out. We do require them to be there for a year. So the answer is yes. It doesn't overcome the fact that then you'll have another group in the community that's probably upset that we've hidden the view shed again. But I do take Ms. Larson's point, it's not that we wouldn't listen. We do, I think the listening part is important. It's sometimes we're not able or wouldn't recommend what one group has over what another group might want another way. So that's always a balance for us.
I guess, I guess my sense is that I'd be willing to entertain the idea of a covered slip, but only if it's going to recover the same level of revenue as, as uncovered slips would.
I know a lot of times when we go out and, you know, ask the citizens questions on certain things, we don't ever put a number with them. So would you like this? Well, heck yeah, I'd love it. What do you mean it costs?
Six hundred bucks a month.
You know, I'm, I'm thinking you've got money, so you're allowing me to go ahead and say, yes, I definitely like that. And so I think if we put something out there, we ought to say, if we do cover slips, we would rent them at X. Is that something you would like?
Right.
And then they know ahead of time rather than, well, you put the covered slips in and now you're telling me it's going to cost this amount, you know? And I noticed that most of our, our times that we, we go out, the citizens, I used to think the same thing. If you're asking me a question, would you like sidewalks here or would you like this here? Yeah, let's go. You know, I'm thinking you already have the money, you should ask me if I want it. And most citizens don't realize, look, there's no money here. Do you want this? This is going to cost you in taxes somewhere down the road. So I think if we put that out in front of them and say, hey, if we do cover slips, would you be willing to pay X amount? And if you got four people and you want to do 20, you know, there's no way you're going to be able to do it for four people. Might help.
I would have a follow-up though, too. How many other marinas offer covered slips? Like over Gloucester, where you have the York River Oyster Company, I believe it's called? Do they have covered? Are there other marinas that offer covered slips or are they slowly, as they get old and not maintained, are they doing away with?
Yeah, so from our, from our market studies, and I don't have an exact number in front of me, but it's, it's, very few have covered. You know, I, our counterparts in Hopewell have covered, but they're running into the same kind of issues that we just went through last year with our covered slips. They're much older. So it, I don't have an exact number, but I would say many more are uncovered than covered.
And, and then maintenance in the, in moving forward, too. So.
And if we, you know, if we decide not to do a covered, would we design these that we could add a cover later if we found a desire, a need to, that that could be a step, we could add a cover on top of it later?
I would probably defer to Barry on that one. I think it's a little bit of a challenge because of the flotation for the covered. It really kind of changes the whole design of the.
Yeah, that's exactly it. Barry Moses, I'm the Capital Project Coordinator for the Marine Improvements. And exactly as Alistair said, it would be difficult to have that capability later on. And in fact, when you remove that requirement for flotation, we can get in a few extra boat slips. So instead of having 20 and 22, I think is projected in the current design that we're modifying, we'd have 24 and 24.
We don't cover them.
We don't cover them. Because of the, you don't require as much flotation, we don't have a walkway between every single boat slip.
Any other questions? Looks good. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the, on the fees.
We want to get this suit on camera as much as possible.
I'm wearing my tux next to me. Just, you know, we're, we're doing the market study now and every, every two years at least we look at that, sometimes more. we look at that, sometimes more, in all of our programs and our facility fees to make sure we're we're in the market. And we know right now we're out of market. We're undercharging for covered, uncovered, and we want to get there. So we talk about what we could charge. We could charge significantly more for the covered, but we need, as Barry said, need to make that decision early on in the process. But I think no matter if you if Mr. Stevens alluded to the fact, we were talking about raising the fees, I think, last year, and you all got a little kickback, and we decided not to because we hadn't made all the improvements. We, you know, our restroom and shower facility is is not sufficient, and we are going to make these improvements. And so I think that will be time for us to really make sure we make the fees here comparable to the other markets. You know, we shouldn't be undercutting the private sector. We should be there. This is going to be a quality facility. We should be proud of the views and everything, and so we should be at the market rate when we get to that point. So whether they're covered or not, the fees will go up to meet the market. Looking at what Alistair has provided, we're below the market now, so.
That's all. All right. Sir.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is I've had conversations with several folks who've had boats out there that had to move them, or I know one individual who has sold his boat and looking maybe when we get this done to buy one and come back in. And it's folks who had been there for quite a while, and I think their concern was about how easily they could get back into the slips and and what the process we would go through, whether it would be a lottery or or, you know, whether somebody can homestead there and then people on the waiting list have to wait 15 or 20 years to get in, that type of thing. I think that's one of the questions you need to take a good look at with the boating community when you go out and talk to them. I also agree with Mr. McGinn in here that if you if they want covered slips, then we need to have an idea of what it would cost to do it and what what the cost recovery would be. Because if you say, we can provide covered slips, but it's going to be $600 a month, they may be very quick and say, yeah, not so fast. So that discussion, I think, needs to be had with with the boating community. You know, if the the market tends to be mostly the uncovered slips, that's probably where we're going to be, the bulk of it. I think we can get more in and we can have a, you know, accommodate more boats there. I think the biggest thing right now I'm getting from them is the lack of information and the concern that this has been going, quote, going nowhere. And I tried to tell folks that, hey, this is a long term project, it's going to take some money and some effort, and it's going to be several years. So I think it does reinforce with the boating community that we do have a target window of, but it's going to spring in 2026. So to address some of their concerns about, you know, what the future looks like for them.
You know, I'm amazed that I used to keep my boat down here, and I'm amazed how far we've come with the limited funds we have available to do this, how far we've improved this, because when I kept my boat down there, it was a fun place to be, but it wasn't top class of anywhere. I mean, it was a nice, nice spot, but, you know, we've come such a long way with what we have now, and by 2026, to have this wrapped up, I applaud you. I think it's going to be great for the community. I think it's going to be a wonderful facility, and I think anybody who puts their boat there is going to be lucky to be able to put their boat there. My two cents. Anything else? Thank you. Great, great presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Looking for the FYI 2023 Annual Report. Latara, how you doing today?
Good.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. I hope y'all had a happy Thanksgiving.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to present an overview of James City County's Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Report. The annual report highlights the accomplishments of county departments for fiscal year 2023, which is the period between July 1st, 2022, and June 30th, 2023. For this presentation, I will cover a few highlights for each department. The full annual report document will be available on the county's website, jamescitycountyva.gov. First, we'll start with community development. The Skifts Creek Connector Project was finalized, linking Route 143 and Route 60 near the Walmart Distribution Center. The new roadway will relieve congestion, improve safety, and alleviate traffic in nearby neighborhoods. The Board of Supervisors adopted the Natural and Cultural Assets Plan, which identified strategies to conserve or restore valuable natural resources and cultural assets in the county. Community development also leveraged a state grant to assist 25 households with pumping out their septic tanks. Economic Development presented a Founder's Award to three local businesses that were celebrating their 50th anniversaries, AB Inbev, Ball Metal, and the Williamsburg-Jamestown Airport. The county was awarded $485,500 in Virginia Business Ready Site, excuse me, Sites Program Grant Funding to support the completion of work related to the Hazelwood Farms Enterprise Center. And Economic Development facilitated the sale of 58 acres of Economic Development Authority-owned property in the James River Commerce Center to Aspen Construction Company. Financial and Management Services overcame unprecedented staffing challenges while continuing to meet deadlines and elevating existing staff through professional development and promotions. The department achieved two major milestones with software enhancements, including the launch of a budget module in Munis and a Teams OneDrive channel. The Real Estate Assessments Division processed over 4,100 sales and completed 1,100 permits for new and or additional structures. The Fire Department began carrying O positive whole blood on its EMS supervisors' vehicle, making James City County one of just a handful of EMS agencies in Virginia with this capability. They also placed a new technical rescue truck and fireboat into service. Fire and Social Services continued to collaborate on the Community Outreach Network Educate, Care, Thrive, or Connect program, which makes which links citizens and their caregivers with appropriate resources and aid. General Services received a $10,000 grant from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for septic pumpouts for income-eligible property owners. Staff rehabilitated Baseball Field 5 at War Hill Sports Complex and renovated the basketball courts to improve safety, accessibility, and appearance. The department also installed a dual-port electric vehicle charging station at the James City County Recreation Center, supported by a grant from Dominion Energy. Our Human Resources Department was honored by the Greater Williamsburg Chamber of Commerce as the Health Promoter of the Year in recognition of their efforts to enhance employees' access to health improvement opportunities. The county's open enrollment process earned a 96% approval rating from employees who appreciated the user-friendly features of the online system. And finally, demonstrating a commitment to fair compensation and employee well-being, the county raised its minimum wage to $14.78 per hour. Information Resources Management Department's Video Services Team expanded live streaming to all public education and government channels for citizens to view live or on demand. Geographic Information System, or GIS, staff completed the requirements and mapping system modifications for next-generation 911 implementation, which will help first responders reach callers requesting emergency assistance. The county was announced as the winner as a winner of the 20th Annual Digital County Survey by the Center for Digital Government and the National Association of Counties. Parks and Recreation installed a new outdoor classroom at Freedom Park, supported by a grant from the Virginia Department of Forestry and over 110 volunteer hours. Parks and Recreation's inclusion programs provided year-round accommodations to over 400 customers with special needs, and new tourism activities, including 10 Newtown Tunes outdoor concerts, and the new Five and Dime Trail took center stage this year. Parks and Recreation was also recognized for excellence, winning six top honors from the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society. The Police Department secured $177,159 in grants to enhance public safety, including the Bulletproof Vest Grant and DMV's Alcohol and Speed Enforcement Grant. Police hosted the Third Annual Halloween with Heroes, a fun community event bringing together local families and first responders. The Police Department also hosted its annual Shop with a Cop event, mentoring community youth and helping them enjoy a special holiday shopping opportunity. The Department of Social Services Children's Services Unit successfully placed 90% of children in foster care with their kinship family. The Housing Unit implemented the Local Housing Voucher Subsidy Program funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, reaching 90% of the program's original goal. Several homeowners received assistance, including basic exterior repairs in partnership with Habitat Humanity, as well as affordable housing construction through the Community Development Block Grant and first-time homebuyer support. The Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program and Medicaid saw significant increases in participation rates. Last but not least, the Williamsburg Regional Library was ranked as one of the top public libraries in the country, earning Star Library status, a distinction given to only 5% of public libraries. The Friends of the Williamsburg Regional Library Foundation received the 2022 Friends of the Library Award from the Virginia Library Association, and the library was selected as one out of 160 public libraries across the country to receive a $7,000 grant from the Public Library Association to provide digital literacy workshops. And that concludes my overview of James City County's Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Report. The full document will be made available on our website, jamescitycountyva.gov. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Did I did I just miss it, or did I not see a slide related to our Public Information Office?
Oh, this is.
Because I think that there have been some substantial accomplishments there as well.
Yes, yes, of course. I I'm a little bit biased in that way, so absolutely, I would say so. We typically, because our our work typically supports the other departments, we're sort of baked into to the other departments, but yes, we will certainly.
I think there's nothing wrong with giving a pat on the back where it's deserved.
Thank you.
And I would just make one other note, and that is your your cover slide reminds me of the number of times that official publications for the county feature a tree prominently. And so I think that's an important thing for us to remember as we think about other ways we can improve the community.
I was going to ask about that picture, too. I'm sorry. I put a mint in my mouth. It looks very familiar to me.
I believe this one was taken from Chickahominy Riverfront Park.
Oh, okay.
I believe so.
Okay. I thought maybe it was First Colony because of the swim lane, the swim bowies or whatever out there, so, okay, I'm mistaken. Thank you.
Yeah, the, you know, I think it's amazing what we've seen just today on what our staff is doing for our citizens. And hats off to all the staff and everything they do, from Parks and Recs to police to fire to to every staff member we have in James City County. It is amazing to to we're we're so lucky, because I look at other communities and they're doing their best, but I don't think they have the quality we have. I'm just biased. I just think we've got top-quality staff, and and I think they do a wonderful job, and and I'm hats off to all staff, and thank you for everything you do. I appreciate it. Anybody else?
I was just going to say, I would summarize it in one word if the presentation, Latara. Impressive. Thank you.
Well done.
Very well done.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move into Board Considerations, our 2024 Legislative Program. Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As we've reviewed 2023, it's now time to look forward to 2024 in the next General Assembly session. You have before you your 2024 Legislative Program. We talked about this a little bit at your your previous work session meeting. I hope I've captured all of your your thoughts and ideas on here. Really, I'll only highlight a couple of them, maybe three of them that are on there. The first one, amend Virginia Code Section 242604 to extend the 40-foot no-contact rule to include the entire building, not just the entrances. That deals with our voting center. That would certainly keep us from having to to draw these weird arcs from entrance doors and would just allow us to do a perimeter to of the voter building. Your second one in there, really in the same complex, support efforts to add an additional Circuit Court judge in the Ninth Judicial Circuit. That has actually made it through the, I think, Judicial Review Panel. This is also on all of the board's and council's agendas, I believe, in the Ninth Circuit. I know I've seen it on New Kent and the City of Williamsburg, and the judge has really wanted that on there, hoping that that'll get the General Assembly to get that final push to have another seated judge, Circuit Court Judge in the Ninth. And then I'll skip forward to number 10, short-term rentals. They continue to be a bone of contention in every General Assembly. As you know, we permit short-term rentals by as a matter of right in about 40% of the land area in James City County. We do require special use permits for those other ones, and really, that just encompasses neighborhoods that don't have HOAs, where the board is almost acting as an HOA to consider whether or not a short-term rental is appropriate there. We've really fought to keep that ability here locally, and I believe Airbnb companies have fought just as hard to get rid of that. So that's going to be up again, this General Assembly, and we hope to maintain that power. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about any of the ones that are on your agenda. If not, I recommend that you adopt the attached resolution, which sets this as your legislative agenda, and once you do that, I will send it out to all of our legislators, both old and new.
Questions?
I guess I do have one question, and that is, to what degree have we been able to establish any relationship with our legislators who'll be representing us this year? We have a couple of new ones.
I haven't. I'm I've not met Senator McDougal yet. Of course, we know Delegate Batten, and I have some familiarity with Sheriff Diggs, and so I'm happy to send all of this to them, but I'll definitely introduce myself in a letter and mail this out.
And Delegate Green as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Chair Hippel and I had a meeting with Delegate-elect Green last week and went over our legislative program with him. He, of course, being as he is a supervisor currently, he does have, I think, a clear understanding of local issues, especially, my words, not his, overreach by the General Assembly versus what locality should be doing. He seemed to assure us that he would work work towards things on our legislative agenda. He doesn't seem to be wanting to do, you know, he he understands about local control and doesn't seem to that he's going to be introducing anything that would go against Also, Supervisor Sadler and I had an opportunity to meet Senator McDougal. We were very late, though, because he had he did a roundtable with, I think we all got notified of that, but it was after a meeting that we had had, so we were very late getting there. And so I didn't, I can't sit here and say to you anything that he was that he would or would not bring forward, just basically told him about the county. So I think we'll have some relationship building there and with Senator Diggs as well, so, yeah.
Any other questions? All right.
Move the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Call please. Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGinn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. Boards' requests and directives. Anyone have anything to this meeting?
Just a reminder, if you need to drip your faucets tonight, might want to do that. I've already got my cabinet doors open and ready to start dripping because it's going to be cold.
I just wanted to mention that I attended this morning a session on the state of transit in Hampton Roads with representatives from WADA, HRT, and Suffolk Transportation, Suffolk Transit, and it was very interesting. Our area was very well represented. Terry Benas was there talking about our business community and its needs with transit, and got to hear Matt Scalia also made a presentation as Executive Director of WADA. So I thought it was very. So I thought it was very useful, inaugural State of Transit in Hampton Roads event. And I encourage others to consider attending next year's session.
And so glad you were able to attend that, because I saw that we were invited, but I'm glad you took on going there and then trying to get back here, because I wasn't quite sure if that was gonna work. Very briefly, just very quickly, I think a week or so ago, Verizon seemed to have some sort of failure. I'm not quite, at least in my end of the county. It seems to start in Governor's Land and go work its way up Route Five area, possibly impacting other areas as well. All that citizens were getting on their telephone was SOS. Realizing that Verizon is not a, you know, that is not the responsibility of the county. However, when you have sold a product that people become, that they rely on, it's so much so that they let their landlines go, for instance. People, you know, frankly, like my mom, eighty-one years old, doesn't have a landline, just relies on her cellphone. But the most frustrating part of the exercise, I think, for people was that they were calling Verizon and told there was no issue here. "Oh, there's no issue. There's no issue. Don't..." No one's called before, when it was very obvious that they had received hundreds of calls from people who were having the same issue. I finally reached out to Mr. Stevens on Sunday to say, "There's something going on." People are not able to make calls, are not able to receive calls. Which, great, if you have internet at home, you can go on your Wi-Fi. But if you don't have internet for a variety of reasons, or you're staying here or something like that, and you have no access, it's an issue. So I understand that there can be failures on, you know, equipment or just different... But for whatever reason, the right hand did not know what the left hand was saying, or they weren't being transparent with their customers. Something was not adding up. And so, you know, I hope, and I think we've reached out to them, but I think we need to, you know, it's very easy to say, "Yeah, not our problem." But for a large majority of our citizens, for about forty-eight hours, it was a huge issue. And I think it was also, frankly, very scary. If you couldn't get out of your home for whatever reason, and you weren't able to make a call or communicate with people, that can be frightening. And then when you're trying to deal with the company and say, "Oh, no, nobody else has said that," when it, you know... So I just hope we can keep pushing and hopefully get some sort of answer as to why that might have happened, or what was going on, or that in the future, they'll make sure that they have some sort of communication so that everyone knows that possibly there's a problem, but they're working on it. I think if people had felt as though that was being worked on, there would have been less upset, but...
Maybe they can come back for another presentation.
We had them here before, so...
Yeah, that wasn't happening, so... Yeah, well, we've made, I've got loads and loads of notes every time I've had a call drop, so...
So we did have a gentleman from Verizon come to speak to us after a series of complaints about their failure to provide reliable service. I'd suggest that we just ask that we get a written report back from that gentleman about what he can find out about that weekend and the event that led to so many people having service challenges.
And it's continuing. I mean, it's...
I think it's gotten worse.
It has. I'm wondering if they have too much on their bandwidth that they've sold, because I'll go around and calls will drop. You gotta call somebody back, and I have more people that, "That's not your phone. It must be mine. Are you on Verizon?" Yeah.
Oh, you must be on 199. The calls are...
199 is terrible. That's around the power lines. So, okay, anything else? Thank you. All right.
I, yes, sorry, I didn't want to put one thing in. I think several of us were able to make it. I barely made it in time, but the swearing-in ceremony for our police officers. Chief, we had, what, nine? Nine new police officers sworn in. And it was an impressive ceremony. It's an impressive young group of recruits. And I am extremely pleased to see the progress is being made there. So I think, you know, every opportunity we have to interact with the new folks, so much the better.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else? One last call? County Minister?
Just a few items. Speaking of swearing-in ceremony, we are scheduled to have a swearing-in ceremony for our newly-elected and re-elected members on December 12th. We'll have a reception that begins at 3:30. Swearing-in will begin around 4:15. It'll be ahead of your December 12th meeting. So family and friends and community members are certainly invited to attend and look forward to hosting that this year and moving on from there. Leaf disposal collection's still going on, so it's just really, or just beginning, December 1st, runs through about the middle of the month. If you put them out in bags, they need to be clear plastic bags. We come through neighborhoods one time to pick up. If you have questions, call our General Services. We also, residents could drop these off until January 15th at no charge at our Jolly Pond Convenience Center off of Jolly Pond Road. And then, public meeting notice. Ms. Larson had a resident reach out about notice of our meetings. With our change over to civic clerk, it has become easier, and so we did start publishing email notification. Once we publish agendas, if residents want to sign up, they can get an email notification that there's been an agenda published. And so with the idea of trying to get it out to those that are really interested in what's going on and push that information to them, you can go to our website under Agenda in Minutes and sign up that way, or you can call our clerk at 253-6609. Again, 253-6609, and she will help get you signed up for that service if you want to know when our boards and commissions' agendas are published. So if you have questions on that, send them to us, and we'll be happy to get them signed up for that as well.
Thank you for that. That came out of the action that we did with the storage unit at By Forks. Though, while I appreciate the red and white signs, they are almost impossible to read, especially as you are driving. And it's not always safe to pull over. And actually, it was a citizen, it was on the Next Door Neighbor app or website, a citizen from York said something to me about, "Hey, I get all their agendas." And I reached out, and you said, "Hey, we've got a way to do that now." And I have sent it to several people so that they will be able to see, especially Planning Commission Board of Supervisor agendas, and so they'll know what's coming up. I think that'll be very helpful. So thank you for that.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just reinforce the announcement about the leaf disposal deadline. The Berkeley and Roberts districts start on December 1st, so though the period extends for several days, your leave should be on the curb at seven o'clock in the morning on December 1st to be assured that they'll be picked up.
All right. Okay, next I'll look for a motion to go in a closed session for Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711.8, Consult with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of local advice by such counsel specified in the New Towns Sections Seven and Eight proffers. And number two, discussion or consideration of acquisitions of real estate for a public purpose where discussion opened meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to Fire Station Six land acquisition. And number three, discussion of order of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion in terms of scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to the contract between the county, the city of Williamsburg, and the Williamsburg-James City County schools. And number four, consideration of a personal matter appointing individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, appointing to Chesapeake Bay Board and the Wetlands Board, and appointments to the Stormwater Program Advisory Committee. I have a motion...
So moved. So move. Roll call, please. Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Isenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Can we take a...
All right, come out of closed session on new certification.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke with those items we said we would speak about in closed session.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, results.
Okay, so I move that we appoint Mr. John Lynch to the Stormwater Advisory Committee, Stormwater Program Advisory Committee for a four-year term effective immediately and expiring on June 30th, 2027.
Sir, roll call. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, next we'll go into is our adjournment until 8:30 a.m. on December 1st, 2023 for a joint meeting located at room 127 in the Skyler Building for 1-2 Northbounder Street, Weinsburg, Virginia. Have a motion.
So moved.
So moved, thank you. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.